Okay. Good evening and welcome everybody tonight to our committee of the whole meeting. To start off our committee of the whole meeting tonight, we have a public hearing. So tonight's public hearing is to consider amending the land use by law to rezone a portion of a property along Dennis Point Road, Lower West Pabico, PID 90081142 from marine industrial zone to light industrial zone. So councillors, this evening, we have one item on the public hearing agenda scheduled to begin at 6:30. The purpose of this hearing is for council to hear input from the public prior to making a decision on the proposal. To the members of the public who have chosen to come this evening, welcome. Everyone that wishes will have an opportunity to be heard. For those joining us via Facebook Live, feel free to ask questions during staff's presentation. Tonight council may approve, reject, or defer its decision on the proposal to a later date. Council approval is required for the process for the proposal to proceed. I will now ask the municipal clerk to outline when the public hearing advertisements were published.
Hi Deputy Warden, council. A public hearing notice appeared in the March 10th and March 17 editions of the Vanguard. The notice described the proposal, gave the date, time, and location of this public hearing, and indicated that the report outlining the proposed application was available to the public if requested. Staff also posted the notice of this hearing on the municipality's Facebook site. Posters were placed at six different local businesses informing residents of this hearing, and letters were also sent to residents, businesses, and landowners who are 152 metres from the development site.
Councillors, on the public hearing schedule this evening is a proposal to consider amending the land use by law to rezone a portion of a property along Dennis Point Road, Lower West Pabico, as I previously mentioned, PID 90081142, from marine industrial zone to light industrial zone. I would now ask Jared Dalziel, project manager from WSP, to present his report.
Thank you very much. You're worshiped with that. Go through with the screen share.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, so the application for consideration this evening is for rezoning or a mapping amendment to land use by law from the light industrial zone to the light industrial zone, I should say, to enable a micro cannabis production processing facility. The proposed use, the cannabis production processing facility, is not permitted under the property's current marine industrial zone. The light industrial zone permits micro cannabis production and processing facilities as of right. This means that if approval was given to the application this evening, and the proposed building or the proposed development meets requirements of the zoning by law for setbacks, lot area, and other requirements, just basically the general regulations that a development permit could be issued for the proposal. As a rezoning application, councils obligated to base their decisions on the policies containing the missile planning strategy, and those relevant policies are outlined in the staff report attached to the agenda this evening. In terms of context, it's located in the marine industrial area and Lower West Pabico, around where that white triangle is shown on the map. It's located on the Dennis Point Road, near the Dennis Point Wharf in Lower West Pabico. It's currently a vacant property and it's undeveloped marine industrial land. The property size is just under five acres at 4.9 acres. The area to be rezoned shown in teal on the map is just over three acres with about 14 metres of frontage. Just for context, the Dennis Point Cafe is shown there as well. Proposed property is split zone with a portion of the zoning fronting the Dennis Point Road being zone marine industrial or MI zone, and the rear portion being zone mixed use zone. And this proposal is not to change the rear portion of the property, so the portions are mixed use. That would actually require missile planning strategy amendment and be a bit of a larger application. The map shown on the slide there, that black line shown is the dividing line in the zoning maps between the mixed use zoning and the marine industrial zoning at the present time. In terms of the zoning around kind of the application site, adjacent properties fronting under the Dennis Point Road are zoned marine industrial with properties in the rear being zoned mixed use zone. Scientist posted in the property on February 1st informing residents of proposed land use by law amendment application, and the frontage is shown there just for everybody's reference. In terms of the application itself, the Cannabis Act permits up to a maximum of 200 square metres of cultivation area as part of one of these micro processing, micro production facilities. While the Cannabis Act does restrict that area up to that maximum size, there could be multiple premises on a single property under our zoning by law. So you could have multiple 200 metre basically building areas divided with like firewalls and so on. Two options had been presented by the applicant for the proposed building to contain 12 bays, and bays being basically these reformatted shipping containers. Either one story height building of around 120 feet by 60 feet, or alternately a double height building around 80 by 60 feet. So they'd be basically stacked on top of each other with essentially a catwalk that would let you kind of access both both of the bays. The proposed production facility itself is proposed to be composed of self-contained grow pods. However, they're not held to that as part of this application. These federal licensing requirements take quite a period of time to kind of get through and get everything approved on. So really, the question here tonight is for the zoning change itself. Just in terms of what some of these facilities look like on the inside. For some examples, they're quite medical for the most part because of the sanitation requirements that the Federal Cannabis Act requires. Furthermore, any building used for cannabis production processing is required to have systems to filter air under the Federal Cannabis Act to prevent the escape of odours associated with cannabis to the outdoors. Just for reference, licenses under the Cannabis Act are valid for a maximum of two years and are not automatically renewed. So if an operator fails to comply with the regulations in place under that federal act, they run the risk of not having their licence renewed, which is a large encouragement to comply with the regulations, both kind of throughout the act as well as these dealing with kind of nuisance or odours. We've, our company has recently completed interviews with planning departments who approved cannabis production facilities in Nova Scotia and New Brunswick. For the properties or the groups we've interviewed in Nova Scotia, no land use conflicts were experienced during operation, so smells, traffic, things like that. There was some issues in New Brunswick, mainly dealing with like large facilities where the filtration system put in place at the beginning wasn't sufficient or smaller operations that when they first came into being hadn't put similarly the same controls in place. Same with any type of new business, when these kind of first came online, there were additional issues which people kind of started to understand as they've developed these facilities and we've got more experience with it. So if the amendment has approved the subject property, you're permitted to grow cannabis, process cannabis for wholesale trade as a licensed producer and sell cannabis for medical purposes. So those authorized under the Health Care Protector Practitioners in Health Canada. Just for context, so this wouldn't change the commercial conception or sale rules that are under the province. So still recreational cannabis can only be bought until the NSLC in Nova Scotia. In terms of missile planning strategy policy considerations, as I mentioned before, the detailed look at kind of the missile planning strategy policies are in appendix B of the staff report. Overall, just for context, existing policies and the missile plan allow council to consider amendments to land use by law regulations. Basically the zoning without requiring amendments to the missile planning strategy. So the policy designation areas, as both zones share what's called the rural centre designation. So the general idea of that is there's these designated areas within the missile plan that a number of zones could occupy. Both of the zones, so the current marine industrial zone or the proposed light industrial zone, both fall within that designation area. Furthermore, there's what's called an enabling policy. So basically a policy lets council consider this type of application, which we've policy 13.11.2 with missile plan. In terms of discussion, the surrounding properties along Dennis Point Road are currently split zone marine industrial for the portion of the lots fronting onto the Dennis Point Road and mixed use zone at the rear. However, the size changes, so some of them are, some of them aren't. As you saw previously, that's kind of where the dividing line is through a section of this property. The basic zone residential properties, they're located approximately 444 metres from the proposed portion of the property being rezoned to light industrial. So quite a distance away for those existing residences. Typically in Ontario, for instance, a lot of setback requirements vary between about 50 to 75 metres for micro cannabis production facilities, or far in excess of that with the proposal here tonight. The rural centre designation recognizes that land uses near the wharf or wharf facilities are primarily for marine industrial uses. However, light industrial uses are also kind of permitted within these areas if they do not conflict with residential uses. Kind of just for the overall intent of kind of these planned areas, the intent of the marine industrial zone is to accommodate ample supply of land for fishery and marine related industrial uses. However, as part of the kind of this analysis, it's, there's a lot of undeveloped marine industrial land at the moment. So there's ample opportunity for those uses to expand in the future. And we don't feel like there's a risk of kind of shortening or supply of marine industrial land with this proposal tonight. Staff reviewed the applications based on policies contained in the missile plan. They've found that them generally consistent, the application generally consistent with the spirit and intent of missile plan. Campus of public engagement, a public hearing is required for land use by law amendments to hear input from the community, which is why we're here tonight. Staff have complied with the public participation policy of the missile plan as well as the direction from council at the first reading of the application. An advertisement outlining the proposal indicating has been received and under review by staff was placed the March 10th, 17th editions of the Tri-County Vanguard. And a notice of the application was also placed on the missile website. And as the municipal clerk noted, a number of posters were also put up informing residents of the hearing. Further to that, a mail was given to all property owners and businesses with 152 metres of the portion of the property proposed to be rezoned, which was about 30, 13 letters that went out. In terms of next steps, staff have completed the review of the proposal. No written public feedback was received for the application. I would note that there is a right to appeal option for both approval and refusal of the amendment to land use by law or the rezoning. Basically following the public hearing here tonight, council will likely make a decision at their subsequent meeting following either that approval or refusal. If it's a refusal, the applicant has the option to appeal that refusal based on if the decision was consistent with the policies in the missile plan. Similarly, an aggrieved person can appeal the decision of council if it's an approval. And there's a 14 day appeal period for that after the notice of approvals published in a newspaper. So likely the entire process will likely be concluded in a month, assuming there's not a deferral of a decision of council. The recommendation is above. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Next, do we have any members of council who have any questions for staff? Is there anybody that has anything they would like to ask any councillors? Seeing none. I'm going to move on. Are there any members of staff? Sorry, I will open up the floor for comments and questions. Any comments or questions from people in the public tonight? Just raise your, maybe raise your hand if you would like to comment, question? No? So this is the opportunity for the public to ask questions. Okay. Are there any comments on Facebook?
Or none?
Nothing on Facebook? Any members of staff have any final comments? Yes, councillor Diggan?
Thank you. I believe we have B. Dontrama that's watching here this evening that had wanted. I was told he was gonna make a presentation, now I'm not sure what's going on or if he's having trouble with his Zoom connection or what's going on. But I see he's in the gallery here.
Hi, how are you Brian?
Good. Mr. Dontrama, would you like to speak?
Yeah, we have technical difficulties here. We lost you for a bit there, sorry about that.
No problem.
Number one, I'm not opposed to the project. The only thing, I have a few concerns because I am alongside of, I own the land, occasionally own the land right next to the proposed land that they're starting to use. And so that is why am I concerned and I take great pride in anybody that knows me knows that in keeping the plant clean and no odor in the fish plant. And I would be, if I, you know, I'm concerned about the smell. I don't know enough about it to complain because I don't know the whole thing. But, and water, we have a well that we, two plants, three plants actually raining from that well now. And we feel that if they're gonna have, they're gonna need a lot of water, they would have to make their own well. Because this well cannot take care of everybody according to Ray Dontrama, which is our local farmer. And basically, I wish the guys well. I hope this business does make a lot of money for them and that stuff. So I'm not opposed to it. I just got a few concerns. Number one, the water, where are they going to get that water? And the smell, so those things, two things I didn't care of, I'll throw 55.
Thank you. Is there somebody who would like to answer that? So his two concerns were around the water and the smell?
I'd like to if possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Deputy Warden and councillors, my name's Av Singh. I'm an independent cannabis consultant and a faculty member teaching the cannabis cultivation course at the Nova Scotia Community College. I just wanted to comment to Mr. Dontrama's concerns, and they're both incredibly valid. The aromas that come from the cannabis plant are medicinal, but they are, can be offensive. Many, many people do not, you know, enjoy the aroma that comes from the cannabis plant. As Jared pointed out, it is the responsibility of the licensed producer to mitigate those odours. So the design of the facility should ensure that all air that is being exhausted out of the facility is, has all of the odor removed. That doesn't mean that it'll be perfectly scentless because there is always some passive air that is leaving the building. The clothes on the members working in the facility will naturally have some of that odor. But that odor should be no greater than what you would have if you were roasting coffee or something like that. So it is incumbent on the licensed producer to ensure that their neighbours are not being offended by these odours. And neighbours can make a complaint to ensure that the licensed producer is kept in check. I potentially may do some consulting with the owners of these facilities. And we have technologies that we recommend beyond the typical charcoal filter in which we incorporate a ozone creator that will take the terpenes. The terpenes are the chemicals that produce this odor and dissolve them into their component compartments, components which are just carbon and hydrogen. So if they use this unit, which is called the core unit, you should have 99.9% of the odours that are actively being exhausted out of the facility removed. In terms of the question around water, cannabis can be a water demanding crop. If one of the mechanisms that we typically recommend most of our growers to use is a condensate collection technique or technology in which when you are collecting all of your condensate, your condensate, your water that's being transpired and recovered through a dehumidifier or through fan coils, you will then be able to remove any of the impurities and treat it either through ultraviolet light or ozone and then be able to recycle the water back into the facility. So you can use minimal amounts of water. I don't know which cultivation strategy they're using. We're big fans of using a living soil system and in fact promote the living soil that Neil and Shannon LeBlanc produce in Wedgeport. And in that system uses a minimal amount of water in which you can actually recover that water quite efficiently. Thank you.
Yes. Dave? So a typical plant uses about what? A litre, a litre and a half a day?
Yes, it will, we typically will feed most plants about a litre and a half a day and a plant will transpire about 90% of that in in 24 hours.
So that's about a gallon a minute? Per day, right?
Sorry?
For a micro, let's say we have 2,000 plants, right? Let's say we have 2,000 plants, a litre plus a plant. And that's four to 5,000 litres, so that's roughly a gallon a minute, which is not a whole lot of water.
Well, yeah, I actually wouldn't know the amount of water it requires, but you would, you'd probably have closer to about 1,200 plants if you were fully using your 200 square metres. Most people wouldn't have 2,000 plants, they'd have closer to 1,200 or less.
If you use 2,000 just to
Yeah.
For, you know, just to have a higher scale, yes, yeah. So in terms of the water use, I believe it would be, I think that's more of a private conversation. I don't think it has anything to do with the municipality. So we would have to have a conversation with me and with the other users of the wells. We don't want to have anybody go dry, so we're gonna do whatever we have to do to make things work.
How are you doing?
Good.
I want to make it very clear, I wish you well in your new endeavour and I support you. All right. The only thing that we have that I'm concerned, the well that we got way up across Inshore, that one Regis said is full capacity, all we can pump out of there. So there is, a well doesn't cost that much to make on your property. And if the gas is too much, I have a couple here that are going to know how many rings that you could take water off. I want to see you stock, how's that?
Good.
Councillor Saret?
I'd like to give this question to Jared. Mr. Singh, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Mr. Singh said that it should mitigate all the smell. And that word is should. Do we have something in the, in our bylaws or municipal MPS that says that if the smell is there that we can shut it down?
Through you. So you don't in your land use by law necessarily, so you rely on the federal act requirements for that? Which is frankly much stronger, much stronger, a bit as in this case, than something you would typically have. So there is a process that Mr. Singh mentioned that basically make a complaint to the, it's Industry Canada, they've changed names now. Basically with the federal government and then municipalities can also do that as well. So I would likely direct you to use kind of the formal process that actually have already developed, both for the public and for municipalities.
Jared, is that in the, there's a development agreement, right?
So this has been a development agreement, so just rezoning. However, if you were gonna prepare a development agreement, like we do require that for like a standard production facility. There are, yes, you could impose additional like infractions essentially against things like that as part of that development agreement process.
Deputy Warden, just one more comment and I'll be done. By the way, Sherman and Owen, I wish you all the best. I'm just asking the question.
Thank you, councillor Saret. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Dontrama?
I got a question for, I'm not sure, it'd be Jared or Mr. Singh. First of all, I'd like to, I'm the councillor for District Nine, which is in the area where this proposal is being made of, made for. And I have to, you know, full disclosure, I am close, personal friends with Sherman. Not so close, personal friend with Owen, but I know him very well. So just so everybody knows that. I know during this you know, this waiting period for the public hearing, nobody approached me and I was kind of, you know, taken back by that. But I figured, you know, somebody would at least talk to me about it. But I think it's a small town and people maybe thought that since I was, you know, good friends with Sherman, that nobody dared to ask me any questions, but I sure hope that they wouldn't be afraid of asking. But just so I'm clear on all the levels, you know, this, this is basically, it falls under federal jurisdiction when it comes to the, I guess the laws that, you know, kind of govern it, if that makes sense, you guys?
Yeah, I can clarify a bit of that. So basically what, as a municipality, what your current land use by law regulates is essentially building setbacks like size, the use that you'd have in them, and things like that. Because this is a federally regulated use, there's also a number of requirements that the federal government stipulates that they have to do as part of operation rather than like being tied necessarily to like a development permit, which is what you typically do as part of a municipality, right? Either a development permit or a development agreement, like he was mentioning. So yeah, really on the operation side, mostly it'll be tied to the federal requirements, the actual building size and footprint, things like that. It's a combination of both, they kind of get layered on one top of the other that they have to meet. So both the municipalities' requirements as well as the federal Cannabis Act requirements.
Any provincial jurisdiction there at all?
Not that I'm aware of, there may be, but it would be more, it'd be less on the land use side, I believe. Unless Mr. Singh wants to provide some context for that, it tends to leave my desk after the building gets done made.
Deputy Warden, if I may? Just following up on Jared's comments, the Health Canada regulations or the, under the Cannabis Act, the regulations around where you set up a facility are pretty limited. They, what they're really looking for is to make sure that you are not setting up your facility adjacent to an area where youth would congregate. So we try to stay away from schools, playgrounds, fields, as well as churches. Other than that, it does become more of a provincial and/or municipal regulation around decision making of where a site is located. So Nova Scotia has a provincial decision where they will only allow for, I believe cannabis facilities to happen in industrial areas. And then, for example, Halifax Regional Municipality will not allow cannabis operations within HRM unless they're on industrial zones. And then municipalities can have setbacks which vary between the position of the building and a residential house. Most ones that I'm aware of all across Canada are about 50 metres from the corner of one building to the corner of a residential house. Hope you councillor.
Yeah, I'm always intrigued with the three levels of government, so I just wanted to know how they all interacted, thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else? Councillor Diggan?
Thank you. I guess in all fairness, I should speak a little bit. I'm the neighbouring councillor to Mr. Dontrama. And I received a few opinions about this proposed business. But I also know Sherman and know Owen, I honestly believe they would be good corporate citizens. I believe that they're gonna try and mitigate any odours that's coming off of that plant if it gets approved and if they go ahead with it. You know, and I will say, after tonight, no matter what way we go, it puts a councillor in a spot. And I'm not scared to be put in a spot and it doesn't bother me to put in this spot, folks. But, you know, as a municipality, here we are going through all the right steps and given time for people to come and make presentations if they're against it. And we've had none here this evening that I know of against it. You know, and even had the wishes of the business owner across the road. Uh, you know, and even had the wishes of the, uh, business owner across the road wishing them the best of luck and that. So, uh, anyway, whatever council votes on this evening, uh, whether I vote with it or against it, I will be around tomorrow on Publico, folks, so, and I'm approachable, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donaldson.
Yes, like, uh, I, I made this clear the last time we talked on this subject. This is strictly a vote for council to rezone the land, is that correct?
Yes.
Nothing to do with whether we agree with them, with the business, or if the community agrees or disagrees, it's totally to rezone a piece of land.
This would be to pass the second reading of that, right?
Okay, uh, question for Sherman and Owen, if for some reason, which I'm gonna support, I'm gonna support, uh, rezone in the land myself, like the rest of the councils, it's up to them. But if for some reason that it wasn't rezoned, do you have a plan B for another site where you wouldn't have to go through this?
We currently don't have a plan B. Um, we have plan A, B, and C at one point, but now we're sticking to this one, and we're just hoping to go through, uh, we still have our ears open and eyes in case this wouldn't go through, but we don't have a definite plan B as of now.
Yeah, in my mind, your operation, what you're gonna be doing there, to me, is, is a a business that is less intrusive than fish plants, in my opinion, and welding shop, so I mean, so I can't see where you're gonna be any corporate problem for anybody around you, so that's just my opinion.
It's just that, you know, it's, it's just a new industry, it's, it's a new business, and, and there's still that stigma you're around cannabis, of course, but, uh, because it's, it's only been legal for a couple of years, or, you know, so. Um, we wanna go through the right steps, and we wanna go through, you know, the licensing process, and we're gonna do everything in our power to make this, they're going the right way, and be good neighbor, yes.
Okay, I'm all done, and just one quick question, uh, when you're fully operational, I mean, it's got nothing to do with the decision, but how many employees are you looking at?
Master grower and probably two or three helpers at certain times, Abe, is that correct?
Um, I, I would imagine that you would have, uh, three sort of full-time employees, and then when you are ready to process your flower for, for sale, you might hire a few extras to come in, harvest and trim, trim your flower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me stray off the subject, but I'm just curious.
That's fine, no, those are good questions, anyone else?
Yeah, rezoning, B.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I, I, you know, I, I think I understand what you mean. Just as long as the rest of the land is still industrial marine, and that doesn't change, right? Am I right when I'm saying? The only rezoning is gonna be on that property there.
Right.
All right, that's one thing, yeah, as far as workers, don't talk about employees too many, we've got all kinds of room here for employees, we can't find them. Good luck finding employees, guys.
You be, thanks.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll hand it over to Jared again.
Okay, just presented recommendation, um, that council gives second reading and approve the rezoning of a portion of property along Dennis Point Road, Lower West Publico, PID nine zero zero eight eleven forty-two, from marine industrial to light industrial zone.
Thank you, are there any final questions or comments from counselors? Okay. Once this meeting ends, council will begin the, the council meeting where a motion will be made on the application later on in the agenda. Uh, you can watch the meeting on the municipality of our Facebook site, uh, if you would like, and that concludes tonight's public hearing, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your participation. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just bring up my agenda again. So we will now go into our committee of the whole meeting for March thirtieth. Um, I'd like to call our committee of the whole meeting to order, and welcome everybody again. Can we have, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, is there anything anybody would like to add? If not, can I have somebody approve the agenda, have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved by Richard, Counselor Donaldson, seconded by Counselor Glenn Digdon, all those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Contrary-minded? Contrary, Calvin, no? Okay, all right. Um, motion carried, thank you. I just wanna mention that we, you will notice, we have a member who has sent regret, regrets, our warden has had a medical procedure, so he is out for a little bit, and we wish him a speedy recovery. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare tonight? Yes, Counselor Donalds, uh, Counselor Donald.
I don't, I don't think it's a, a conflict of interest, but, uh, as I was saying in the public hearing, but of course, everybody wasn't watching public hearing, uh, when it's gonna come to the item five A, which is the second reading land use bylaw amendment, uh, I just wanted to, full disclosure, that, uh, the, the two applicants are personal friends of mine, but I have no monetary or investment in that business or anything like that, but, uh, just so, you know, just to declare it that, uh, I am, you know, friends with those guys, so.
That's good, just putting it on the table.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, anyone else? Okay, I'm just gonna move my agenda over here, um, all right. Next on the agenda, number three, we have the adoption of minutes, so for three A, we have regular council meeting minutes from March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Is there somebody who would be willing to move them, Counselor Saret, thank you, a seconder, uh, Counselor Sonya? Any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, you can raise your hand, motion carried. We have our special council meeting minutes from March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Somebody willing to make a, add a motion to move those minutes? Counselor Donaldson, thank you, and seconded by Counselor Bork, any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, you can raise your hand, thank you, motion carried. Next, we have, um, in the business arising from the minutes, if you notice, in four A, we have Bell signed agreement. So this is an agreement that's already been signed, it's basically for information, um, just to let you know that the contract has been signed and that work can soon commence on this project. Am I correct on that, Count, uh, CAO Muse?
You are correct, it is for information, this council has already approved this commitment. It is to confirm that the contract is signed and that the work will commence as quickly as Bell can commence the work.
Right. Okay, any discussion, any questions about that, Counselor Saret?
Uh, this is just a comment, they were in Saret's alley in the Tiddle Road, measuring lies today, I saw the truck and doctor. That's it, thank you.
Excellent. It's exciting. Okay, number five, for decision and discussion, so five A is the second reading of the land use bylaw amendment, so it's just exactly what we had been talking about. There was a recommendation, I'm trying to find it. Oh goodness. Looking for it. So we're looking to pass the second reading, we need to make a motion to pass the second reading of the amendment of the, the, the land use bylaw. Where was, I can't find this recommendation. Oh, there it is. So recommend that council give second reading and approve amendments to the land use bylaw to rezone a portion of the sub- of the subject site along Dennis Point Road, PID nine zero zero eight one one four two, from marine industrial zone to light industrial zone to enable a micro cannabis production processing facility. There is a recommended motion, does everybody have that in front of them? Yes, okay. So is there somebody willing to make the motion? To pass second reading?
Over here, Calvin.
Oh, he's a little bit afraid, I think, because of the, yeah, Counselor Donaldson, you're willing to make that motion? Do we have a seconder?
Sorry, Calvin.
That's okay, Counselor Saret, seconded. Questions or comments on that motion? Counselor Dontrum.
Yeah, uh, I guess, uh, you know, the discussion, uh, that, uh, I say that Counselor, myself and Counselor Digdon have before, had before, uh, this meeting was that, uh, you know, we were concerned about the smell, uh, there's a restaurant nearby. Uh, we didn't really know all the details, and we still don't know the details. Here in Lower West Publico, we've had, uh, a few incidents where we've had, uh, you know, people, uh, I guess, experts in the field, uh, saying that, uh, you know, this thing wasn't going to smell, I'll use the example of the sewer plant, we've had, uh, you know, two times that, uh, we, uh, we thought that we wouldn't have any smell from the sewer plant, which, uh, that wasn't, uh, didn't turn out true, uh, or did not work, or whatever. Uh, and then we had the, the watering truck, which we had problems, which had been promised by, uh, experts or people who in that field that, uh, would work for us, but did not. Uh, so that was, you know, two, uh, two black eyes there, uh, so, you know, I guess I'm, I'm a little leery about when it comes to smells. Uh, now, when it comes to, uh, the rezoning of this land and, uh, for the, the use of a cannabis, uh, uh, production, uh, plant, or whatever you wanna call it, uh, I guess I was, I hope, I guess I wasn't hoping, but I was figuring that there would be way more people who would come forward with written statements or, you know, at the public hearing, but as you can see, there is, uh, Mr. B Dontrum, who, you know, was just, uh, giving his concerns, and he has the, uh, business right across the road, uh, which is true. He does keep, uh, you know, everything tidy, uh, and, uh, everything there is, you know, right in order and, uh, no smells, so, uh, you know, we definitely, you know, definitely know why he was concerned, and, but, uh, he obviously endorsed them, uh, so, I guess where, where I'm coming at is, you know, I, we were kind of thinking about, uh, maybe deferring at that time, uh, after hearing everybody's opinion, and to maybe, you know, go to a, a, a production plant, uh, and, you know, have, basically to have a look, but for ourselves, to see if it smells or not, but, uh, I guess if the public is not concerned, well, I'm not too concerned either right now, so, anyway. Thank you.
Anyone else, Counselor Sonya?
Thank you, uh, my question's more procedural. Does, does passing this bylaw set a precedence as far as as someone else making the same application in another community? Or is each, is each application done independently?
Well, I think part of that, if I, if I can, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it all depends on the use of where they want, the, like, the land use of where they want to put that, that facility, right? In this case, we just had to amend the bylaw so that they could put it on that type of land use. So if Ted, they, they begin and they're in the right land, in the right zone, we don't even have to go through this process. It's just because we're making an amendment, am I right in saying that?
Really, yes, a hundred percent, so I, I would, um, perhaps add maybe some clarification, if I may. Um, so this is for rezoning, so it's, they aren't required to come forward with detailed design, um, like floor plans, or like, even necessarily a, like an odor control strategy, uh, or anything along those lines, right? So it's, it's really more or less looking at the policies, the municipal plan, and those are really geared towards cohesion of industrial areas. So you're, you have an marine industrial, if, region essentially, that's that, that zone right now, uh, we should look in a rezone to another industrial zone, which is a light industrial, right? So it's, that's really kind of the, the question in terms of like the, the policy piece that, um, basically obligated to review in some, in some manner, as part of these, um, rezoning applications, I just, I'd like to re-center it back to that, because that really is kind of the, the question at the end of the day. There may be a larger question for us to go back from a staff side and do amendments to how we kind of do review these applications. Um, but currently, it's, if, it's safe if you bought up a property as light industrial zone now, uh, assuming all the setbacks are met and so on, you can come forward for a, a development permit from the development officer, like no, no meetings or public hearings, or things like that required, just for context for everybody.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody? Question? Thank you, question's been called, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, um, signify by raising your hand. Contrary-minded, raise your hand. Motion carried, thank you. Okay. We are at five B, relief of interest. So, uh, especially, I guess, for the new counselors, I'm not sure how many times we've done this since the new counselors have been on council, but every once in a while, we get some properties that we, we make a motion to relieve the interest on for various reasons, and you have a document that was sent to you. There are three properties, the only question I have, CAO Muse, is do we have to do each of them individually, or can we chunk them all together?
Madam Chair, Deputy Warden, we can do them all together in one motion, as long as we say the amount, and seeing as the attachment is, is there, it would be obvious that, what, what you're approving. Um, I will note that of the three that are showing, uh, as write-offs, all three are coding errors. None of them should have had interest, uh, coded to those accounts. So those are coding errors that are system errors that we're looking to, that we have fixed, but, but there is a balance that remains, and that's why we're looking to write it off.
Okay, thank you. Is, Counselor Bork, you, yep, you have a question?
No, it's not a question, I'll make the motion, uh, that we relieve the interest on the Wellington turbine of one thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents, and on the Black, Easement on the Black Palm Road, twenty-eight fifty-eight, and the West Publico Fire Department Insurance and Use, I guess that's, if I'm correct, seventy-six thirty-five, for total of one thousand five forty-eight eighty-three.
Excellent, thank you, do we have a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Saret. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, raise your hand. Motion carried, thank you. Next, Iris Communications, extension of contract, so there are two attachments with this one. Um, and what I understand, this is, this was the, the firm, I guess, that we, the communication firm that we had hired for the, for fib- for fishing public relations. Not sure if you remember that, a few months ago, we had hired them, and we're looking to extend their contract for a minimum of three months, three to six months, is what I believe. So we need them, if we agree to do that, um, and there's also the, the cost sharing funding formula comparison that was given, so what it's going to cost as well. So if we are interested in doing that, we need to make a motion to do so. What is the wish of council? Counselor Saret, you wanna make that motion? Yes, do we have a seconder? Counselor Dontrum? Do we have any questions or comments about that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Contrary-minded, nay, raise your hand, motion carried. Excellent, okay, next, splash pad contribution. And so for the splash pad contribution, there were two attachments. The first one was the presentation that we saw, uh, less than a month ago, hasn't been that long. Um, we also had, oops, the, um, request for decision that was submitted by our CAO. So if you'll permit me, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about this, because I am on the Splashpad Committee. So this work has been going on for probably a year and a half to two years, and I'm not sure if you remember, the, um, the members of, of the Splashpad had made a presentation much earlier in stages in this project, and at that time, our council felt like we didn't have all the information that we needed. So we asked them some more questions, we asked them to kind of go back and find, dig deeper, and it, a lot of it was around numbers, around funding. So they went back and did some research, and they came back and did their second presentation. So some of the things I would just like to mention is that, um, we, so in the request for proposal, you will see, first of all, that the total cost to build this will be about three hu- right around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they're going to cut that into thirds. So a third of that project, um, they're looking for fed- federal and provincial grants, a third of that project will be funded by fundraising, um, because there has been a great demand in the community, interest in the community, and the other third, they wanna take that and cut that into thirds, so. and cut that into thirds. So third by us, a third by the municipality of of Yarmouth and a third from the town of Yarmouth. So that the ask to us is going to be 38,707 38,707, because I can't say it right now. Overall, the operation cost, they're kind of thinking it's going to be around $20,000 a year for operation and that's on the high end. Now, I do want to say that there's been a lot of work done around this project. So Mark Roffey, the town engineer, has helped help kind of determine the best site for this. The specific site, you need to know that the specific site for this project hasn't yet been chosen. It will be on the Mariner Center site. They're feeling that the best position is along the Jody Shelley Drive because having worked with the town engineer, that's where all the piping, it's it's the best location for it and it will not affect the Mariners Center expansion either. I know we had some information today about some wind ish concerns about wind studies and things things of that nature. So I dug a little bit deeper as well in talking with the committee. We do actually have a meeting tomorrow night, but so if you think about the location of that, it's actually kind of behind the Mariners Center building. And then on the other side of the road, there are trees. And there's the water shoots from the bottom and comes up. So wind won't necessarily affect that. And 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 I think about wind and I think about the beach. And I think about wind not really affecting kids at the beach because the water is freezing at Port Maitland Beach and kids keep going, still go in the water. This is, I know there's still some people that aren't 100% sure about this. I've been on the committee from the beginning. I feel like it would be a great addition. The closest one is Shelburne or Middleton. We we have a member on our committee that her husband is a doctor. And when we talk about doctor recruitment, one of the things that she will say often is that her husband says, we don't have enough things for people to do around here. And that's why she's on the committee and she's she's kind of pushed for this. So I'm I'm thinking that those are the biggest things that I wanted to talk about, but I'm going to open it up. Questions, comments from other counselors? And the other two municipal units did agree to the the funding request. Counselor Saret.
Yes, I I've read the the whole thing a couple of times and looking looking at it and I I see I see that the the as you and there's nothing wrong with this, that the town is going to benefit. And the town is going to benefit out of this because there's be people traveling to the army, going to the to the splash park and good for them. And so having said that, you know, there'll be people going to eat, there'll be people going shopping. And there'll be good people possibly on for gas, people coming from outside different municipalities that'll be coming in, you can guarantee. So my my objection, I'm not against the splash park. I want to be sure that I'm understood clearly here. What I'm against is the amount. I think that our 20 as our C A O has put on our on on the attachments, we're 20.9%, roughly that would be 24,000. And that's the number that I've come up with, looking at things that I think our share shouldn't be more than 24,000. It it's a sticking point on my part. I I feel that the one third, one third, one third doesn't represent what the what our use will be. And probably one question will go to the C A O. You had put in your in in the attachment, the survey. What did you mean by the survey? We showed that we are 20.9%.
It's through you, Madam Chair. Counselor Saret, the survey is in reference to the presentation done by the nonprofit committee. If you note, I don't recall the page, there's a there's like a there's a circle ratio, like it looks the percentages. And of the respondents that responded to their survey, the number of 20% came from that survey. So it was their survey. So essentially, you know, look, it's it's an indication of who answered the survey. It it may or may not be an indication of who actually uses the facility, but I thought the information was was useful and very very proactive on the part of the nonprofit organization.
Thank you very much. I I'll just say just one one last comment. I'm willing to support 24,000. I you know, plus the maintenance in the year, but I can't support the 38. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, my comments are exactly on the same line as what Counselor Saret brought up. And I think of the the usage of the YMCA when it was in operation. The public in Argyle used it was our usage was around 20%. I can't see it being any higher for a splash park, probably even lower because I can't picture people from the Palmicos and the Argyles jumping in the car, the ride, the whole way to Yarmouth just to go to a splash park. It may be part of another part of their reason to go to Yarmouth, but if you live in Yarmouth or surrounding area, you can fly your kids on in the car vehicle, take them to the splash park, go home, come back, pick them up. People from 30, 40, 50 kilometers away don't have that option. So I don't think our usage is going to represent one third. That's that's my concern. I'm fully in favor of building that, but I wish it was in Glenwood Park, but
We're getting there.
Or maybe a park somewhere would be better than Mariner Center. I don't know. But anyhow, I don't think Argyle is going to use it a third. So I'm I'm with Gee. I don't even know if I'd go 24%, but I probably will. But I think it will be lower than that.
Counselor Dickson?
Thank you. First question I I'd like to ask our C A O whether we go 24, 24,000 or 38,000. Do we have the money to do that? That extra money to put out there right now? And the money to keep it up?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So a technical issue there. Okay. Well, I mean, I think it's, you know, we certainly have access to that amount of money. I think in light of our conversations last week on strategic planning and some of the things that we may want to do in our own communities, et cetera. There's always a choice. And, you know, how we prioritize those choices. Certainly, we do our best to try to prioritize them or assist you to prioritize them as they're your choices. I would suggest that if you are interested in this project and you feel like you want to be a partner on this project, the amount we can certainly budget for and and get. I would point out that we did recently receive an announcement of a doubling of gas tax. That was an unexpected announcement. So as this is a recreation asset, I suspect that, you know, I can't confirm 100%, but my strong suspicion is that it would be eligible for gas tax funding for that purpose. Certainly, if if you chose not to use gas tax, we would find a way through our capital reserves, which we put aside money every year to fund this if that was in your interest to do so. But I I mean, your question is well founded because I think it's, you know, when I hear that question, I often ask that question individually, the things that we do. Generally, at that at that magnitude, we're we're usually okay if council wishes to do that. It's when it gets bigger and when you start adding a lot of them together, that's at that point that it becomes a little bit more concerning for us as a staff. So I hope that answers your question. It's it's a hard one to answer entirely or directly. Because I feel like the question is asking about other projects as well, like there's an inherent undertone of the question. But this one alone, on its own, yes, we we can certainly do that.
Counselor Sonya.
Thank you. I I have a tendency to agree with Counselor Saret's funding. I'm not quite convinced yet to go that low. However, when it comes to the demographics, Plymouth is probably the closest community to Yarmouth. And I've heard some feedback on that. They would love a splash park. We only are five, six, seven minutes from town. So it's it's pretty natural for us to access town compared to Palmico. I get it. And to Deputy Warden's point of doctor recruitment, which is one of my huge concern, I think that has to be behind our mind and behind our thoughts when we vote for this because that's important for everybody and and to make to make this area attractive, we might have to make a few sacrifices as well. Thank you.
Counselor Bork? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if if we don't say we don't vote to go for this, will the municipality of Yarmouth and the town, will they go forward anyway? That's just a question I have.
That's a great question that I don't have an answer to, to be honest. I'm really not certain about that. I'm I'm pretty certain that the committee won't go back and ask for more money. I feel like this was the ask. They're not going to go back and and say, we need more. This is this is a one time kind of request and and that's it. And I felt like they're not going to come back three months from now and say, oh, we made a mistake and we need more money. This that's not at all what they're going to do. But in terms of will the other two continue on, I really don't know.
Madam Chair, from an administrative perspective, I don't have the answer to that question either. So we don't, we don't know. It really it will depend on their will to continue.
Counselor Donaldson?
The federal, provincial and fundraising aspects of this. They're not there yet, are they? So this is the first step of funding. So
Right.
I mean, this this is a long ways from ago.
Yes.
We speak now. So, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Counselor Dickson?
Pull the trigger and that's on this one. Being as though I feel as though that the Yarmouth people living in the Yarmouth and closer to the Yarmouth area will have more usage out of this than a lot of people in the municipality of Argyle. And being as though I feel as though there's going to be some associated benefits to the businesses in Yarmouth. Having this splash park in there if it goes ahead. And also, I know there's some fundraising being done or going to be done. I feel as though maybe the businesses in Yarmouth may be able to put in a little more money in that. I'd be willing to make a motion that the municipality of Argyle donate $25,000 towards the splash park project in Yarmouth.
Do we have a seconder? Counselor Saret? Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, everybody. Next, we have Mariner Center Strategic Plan. So this is this is for information. Let me see. Do we need to? So have you had the chance to look at the strategic plan? So do we make a motion on this one, C A O? I forget about that. Yeah.
We do. Yeah, this one this one is to to is the request is to endorse. I would note that that a lot of you have had an input on this because some of you as board members and some of you as 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 elected officials. This certainly represents the the strategic, the days that Max Chauvin led, the strategic planning of the Mariner Center. And I can, because it's in front of you, it means that the board for the Mariner Center has approved it and is looking for you to endorse.
So we're looking for an endorsement of this plan. Counselor Dickson?
Thank you. And just for full disclosure again, I do sit on the management board of the Mariner Center, just so people will know that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So what is the wish of counsel? Do we want to make a motion to endorse this? Counselor Saret, yes, you want to make that motion? Do we have a seconder? Counselor Bork, thank you. Counselor, C A O Muse, yes?
Just on the question, not not yet. Just on the question, I just want to be and I'm not I'm not being an alarmist. I just just want to make it very clear that upon endorsing the strategic plan, the responsibility of the plan lies with the board primarily. As owners, however, you should be aware that in this plan, they're going to have priorities and those priorities are going to come up. And those priorities may require funding requests. The endorsement of the plan doesn't mean that you're endorsing carte blanche, all of these recommendations that the Mariner Center Board may receive. Ultimately, you are you're non owner of the Mariner Center as the municipality. You're a member of the board of two memberships, actually, three in fact. And 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 not including non voting. So we have representation of the board, but we're not an owner of the Mariners Center. And as you will see in the in camera element of our of our agenda, I do have the agreement for the Mariner Center funding attached, just to say that we need to renew. And so that discussion, the discussion on that will be in camera. But the current recommendation is a third, a third, a third funding, even if we're a non owner. So the operational consequences of endorsing this plan, I just want you to be aware that there could be things that come down the pipe from a financial perspective that you'll have to consider. But but it does not mean that you're committed financially moving forward because you've endorsed this plan. You you, you know, the the strategic plan isn't, it is also designed to increase revenues and increase activity at the at the Mariner Center as well. So I'd just like to say that a little bit because I find sometimes we we might go a little quickly on these and we approve it. And then a year later, we see the priorities and go, where did that come from? So keep an eye on this one because every year and Duran's going to do an excellent job at this. He is going to do what those priorities are for the current year and he's going to wrap costs and revenues associated with each of those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Good, motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have the Accessibility Committee Member. So we have, we had a discussion about this at a prior meeting. Counselor Dickson is currently the member of the Accessibility Committee. And Warden Muse is the alternate. So if you recall, Counselor Dickson had mentioned that he was struggling to make it to the meetings and felt like really he should not be the main person. And then that would mean it was going to fall on on Warden Muse. And Warden Muse felt like he has enough commitments as it is. So he really doesn't want to be the main committee member. So we're looking for somebody new to take on the Accessibility Committee. So we're we need, we need basically the main member for that committee. Is there somebody who is interested in being a member of that committee? Counselor Dantremont?
When when do they have meetings or?
I believe it's during the day. Is it Counselor Dickson? And it's a monthly meeting?
That is my, and again, I'm sorry that I I'm looking for someone to take this over because anyone that knows me, when I go into something or whatever, I go into it with all my heart and with both feet. The meetings are at nine o'clock usually in the morning and they're going to be starting meetings twice a month instead of once a month. So it was just very, very hard for me to commit to it the way I'd like to be able to commit to it. And that's why I'm hoping that somebody else that has a lot of time or that has some time or more time than what I have lately will step up. Thank you.
Yeah, the nine o'clock in the morning for me is not a good time.
C A O Muse?
Just further context, it's true that we'll be meeting more often as the project accelerates. We're trying to finish the work by September of 2021, which would be earlier than the deadline imposed by government. And so once that work is done, there still would be a need for an accessibility committee, but it would be it would be ad hoc, it would not meet nearly as much and it may change its time and date. It would not meet nearly as much and it may change its time and date. Uh, the reason why we we meet so early in the morning is one of our members is from Australia. And so, um, if we, and so for that purpose, uh, they join via Zoom. So then I would suggest that counselors, if they, if they were not able to attend in person, we certainly could accommodate Zoom because we're already accommodating it, uh, for our Australian member.
Counselor Budra?
Just wondering, I mean, I I'd love to 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 jump in, but I mean, uh, two meetings every month, uh, at nine o'clock, I'm I'm too busy for for that. Why wouldn't the, uh, that one member from Australia change her time that she can Zoom at six o'clock in the evening?
We, we can certainly look into that. Um, I think the time difference at nine means that she's joining us at, I believe, eleven AM or perhaps, uh, twelve midnight. I I I don't have an answer to that question. We haven't asked her specifically that question. But certainly, you know, if if she was more available in the morning, uh, Australian time morning, that that might make sense. Um, we did try to accommodate other, uh, members as well and that seemed to be the right time. But, um, it, we could, we might be able to make changes.
How how many members are on this committee? I mean, we've got a we've, we've got to tend to her needs while there's probably, you know, seven or eight other people on this committee. You know what I mean? Not not to offend her in by any, by any means, just that we're, uh, you know, we're tending to her her schedule, I guess.
Right, and and maybe I, maybe, um, maybe I wasn't like, I I think it was a an agreed upon time. So I I I don't necessarily want to land all of that on her, but but, uh, we know that it's challenging sometimes to get, um, members that are either, uh, have disabilities themselves or work in the arena of of helping people with disabilities or have family members. And so, um, you know, we've been mindful of that for sure. But, uh, look, I mean, i- if if time is an issue, uh, we we would, we we could go back to that committee and see if there are other times.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'd be interested, no problem, but, uh, I can't do it at nine o'clock, you know, twice, twice a month.
Counselor Sonya?
Looks like I'm the only one available. I'm retired and I guess I can make it. My only question, uh, is this, I was told this was live. It's it's not via Zoom?
It, it can, it can be both.
Right. It's mostly live, I think the member from Australia usually zooms in, right? For obvious reasons.
Yeah.
But the understanding is if if a counselor wanted to Zoom in, they could.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, uh, in in some ways, morning's better for me than than evening at times, so, uh, I guess I'll pitch in.
So you're willing to put your name, you're willing to put your name? Okay, thank you, Counselor Sonya, we need a motion for that, CMO? Okay, so can we have? Lots of hands just went up there. Counselor Saret will make the motion to appoint Counselor Sonya to the Accessibility Committee and it was seconded by Counselor Bork. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Thank you.
Contrary minded, raise your hand. Motion carried, thank you, Counselor Sonya.
You're welcome.
I'm sure you feel better, Counselor Digtin?
Thank you, Ted.
I've got one more question.
Yes.
CR in front of our names on these committees.
Let me take a look.
CR stand for?
Current, I think.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So our names, the names that are next to the is that what that would mean? CR stand for current, the current member?
It's short for counselor.
Counselor.
It's really short for counselor.
Thank you.
You'll see on the second page, it says CRS, Glenn, Digtin and Gisarette for the Heritage Advice. That was the, uh, that was the that was the hint for me.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, five G solar project. So we have three attachments for the solar project. The first one is the explanation of the proposal to design and install the photovoltaic system at the Willett Road Water Tower. So it explains the project. Um, there is another attachment which gives the, basically, the revenue that would be generated if we were able to to sell that power. Um, and the third attachment is the request, the request for for proposal. Well, can't spit it out. Um, so looking at this, we talked about this in the past, so this is a change. It's basically a change of location. We had already approved this project, it's just we're changing the location from Wedgeport to East Pumiko. And we would be able to, the the cost would be two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, is that correct, CMO? And we would generate some revenue from that over time. So for the next, it would be all about twenty six and a half thousand dollars a year for the next eighteen years in revenue, is that correct?
Yes, uh, the two seventy five represents the budgeted amount. Um, the actual amount is less, but, uh, there may be some additional costs that will bring it to that number.
Right.
Uh, right now, the contract that we're looking to sign is below, is below the budget. There may be some fencing and other additional costs that we may have to add on, but I think we'll be close to, if not within budget for sure. And, you know, for council's information, you will be, um, there is an attachment, a spreadsheet attachment that shows the approximate revenues and expenses. The things that you should note on that is it it includes a repayment of loan. So it makes the assumption that you've borrowed money to do the project. Well, you didn't use your gas tax to do that. And and my logic around that is that that even we, even if we use that instead of borrowing, uh, I consider, I don't consider that the, uh, the same thing. I I I don't, I don't look at, uh, gas tax as being something that we owe back, uh, to 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 ourselves. So, um, so essentially, in short, it means that that the the taxpayer will benefit uh, into the tune of about twenty five thousand dollars a year in profit, uh, over the eighteen year period. It will start up higher, but then it tapers over time. Uh, and after eighteen, after the eighteen year period, it's possible that 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 will continue, but I I don't know what that looks like.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Cal, uh, Counselor Dontrum?
Yeah, um, I I guess, uh, for me, it's another exciting project in the municipality. We just had our, uh, strategic planning, uh, session at the Argyle where we spoke about, uh, you know, twenty years down the road, two thousand forty one. Uh, solar came out, you know, all these alternative, uh, power sources. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's, uh, you know, this is a great project. It's, uh, you know, taking us in that direction in another part of the municipality, uh, you know. It'd be nice to have, uh, uh, you know, solar in in every district, in every community in the municipality, uh, and other alternative power sources, you know, so it's a wave of the future. Thank you.
For sure, thank you. So there, yes, Counselor Saret?
A couple of questions, uh, I'll add, uh, the, uh, on your, on the, uh, financial end of it, uh, where you got year one to year eighteen, uh, couple of questions, O and M? Operation and maintenance?
You got it.
Uh, I see that energy production in kilowatts seems to go down from year one to year eighteen, is there a reason for that?
Yes, over time, the panels, uh, are, uh, they diminish in in quality. So there's an, I mean, I think these estimates are probably conservative based on what we've seen the others. Um, you know, they don't want to, they don't want to oversell, uh, the ability of these these panels. But what we've seen with 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 both of them in West Pumiko is that they they have outdone the, um, their estimates, at least at the beginning. Uh, obviously, um, you know, you can't predict all the, all the sunny days, et cetera. So there's, there is some, uh, averaging out that happens. But yeah, the the quality of the panels fade over time.
And Madam Chair, one more question. Uh, I'll add, do you, I I I I was looking trenching, fencing, switches, breakers and stuff like that. So I I my question was, I wonder how much more money are we looking at? Two hundred and seventy five thousand, but maybe you've answered that already by saying, uh, I I believe I heard you say that we should not even with the fencing, trenching, switches, breaker, we probably won't go to two seventy five. And I guess, just for my information, I guess.
Right, I I can assure you that we won't exceed twenty two seventy five because some, but but I'm I'm very confident that we'll be be within budget. Um, and so, uh, the electrical switch, I can say that it's 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 really good timing because we're doing a lot of work on the East Pumiko Water Utility and it could use a new electrical three-phase switch in. So it just so happened to be extraordinarily, that's just, that's luck is what that is, the end of the day. Uh, so we will, uh, seek to claim that under, uh, one, one or the other project, but we won't, obviously, we won't have to pay for it twice. And, uh, the fencing itself is is not obligatory. Uh, once we install it, we may make a decision not to fence it, or we could fence it in a different way. That could be quite a bit less expensive. So, uh, I realizing that it's fenced in at our admin building, uh, but knowing there's a lot of traffic and other things that other factors that might come into play. Uh, you know, if we had a high concern for vandalism, uh, then we may make those decisions. So I think we'll engage with our local counselor in that area as well as the fire departments to to understand what their needs might be and and based on that, we'll make a decision. So the fencing may or may not happen, obviously, if it doesn't, we'll be way below budget.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor Bork?
Thank you, Chair. Um, it always shines in East Pumiko, so there'll be a lot of power generated. So. Go ahead. So, uh, this is, this is great, this is what we need and and it's mentioned before, uh, it, every community, every village should have something like this, this is the future. And, um, if I'm permitted to do the, uh, the motion, to, I guess the motion is that the CEO signed the contract with Thermodynamics for the design and installation of the solar panels at Willett Road Water Tower in East Pumiko.
Thank you, do we have a second, or, uh, Counselor Dontrum seconded? Any questions on that? Comments, Counselor Digtin?
Uh, thank you, ju- just one thing I'm thinking about, maybe they've already looked at it. Would there be any room on the roof of the East Pumiko Fire Hall for a, these panels, like I know they went with them a couple of places here in West Pumiko, just wondering?
Uh, that was, uh, Counselor Digtin, that was, uh, absolutely one of the locations that they analyzed. But, um, um, and and certainly there may or may not have been room, I can't remember the reason why they eliminated it. But I think that, uh, uh, the one thing I know about on-ground solar is that they can point them exactly the way they want to point them. And so I suspect some of the decision to be on that location was to maximize the revenue generation.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I was surprised, Madam Chair, that nobody asked if the fence would be electric. I thought I'd throw that in, the answer is no.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Okay, are we ready to vote on the motion? Awesome, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Motion carried, thank you. All right, we're zipping through. We are at H. Kilometers and transportation allowance rate change effective April first, twenty twenty one. So you have an attachment that shows how there are changes. Every once in a while, we see that the rate for for mileage, it changes. So there will be a change on April first. And basically, we need, for this one, we need a motion to accept these changes and that this, these will be the changes that our municipality adopts when it comes to mileage. Okay. Any comments, questions?
I would add that it's already in your policy, but we do, as practice, we we do do a motion every year so that council's aware of the changes.
Right. Counselor Bork?
I just make the motion that we, uh, I guess we accept this.
Second?
Effective first of April.
Thank you. Do we have a second, or? Counselor Digtin? Thank you, any questions or comments? Counselor Digtin?
Thank you, and I believe that rate in it increases just keeping up with the provincial rate, is it not?
Right. It's, yeah, and it happens.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
It's not us making the changes.
No.
All right.
Not making the changes for our municipality, but keeping up the provincial rate.
Uh, um, motion on the floor, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand, motion carried. Good, financial statement. Okay, so I know CMO Muse is dying to talk about this. So we will, three minutes or less, go, just kidding.
That's all I'm gonna need, Madam Chair, that's all I'm gonna need. Uh, as you know, um, we don't go into great detail unless we go quarterly. Um, so I just want to let, just give you an update, uh, so the only, the first three pages are are included. Um, right now, we're seeing an unrestricted surplus of two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Um, I expect that to to continue, um, into March, obviously, March isn't going to change a a a ton from from our year. Uh, I don't expect any huge surprises. Um, that number could in fact increase with an additional inclusion of COVID funding, uh, from the province. What, uh, our Director of Finance and I have decided is that we will, we've reflected thirty eight thousand dollars of revenue coming from the COVID safe restart funding from the province because that's the amount that we could comfortably say that we could claim easily. Most of which, if not all, came from the Mariner Center increased costs. Because, you know, those cost increases were directly attributable to COVID. Uh, we will have other costs coming in in March, um, some, some purchases of of electronic equipment, mostly laptops, uh, to accommodate the at-home work, um, situation, just so happens to be at the same time where some of our computers needed to be replaced. So that was good timing and so that will, that will, um, that expense will be about eleven or twelve thousand dollars because we've got multiple laptops that we were replacing, but it will be offset one hundred percent by the COVID, uh, funding. So that's not coming from from the municipal tax dollar. It, and it does enable us to do our work from home if we have to, uh, because many, while many did work from home, they, we had to make some accommodations. Uh, and some of them couldn't because of the computer restrictions that they had. Uh, overall, uh, what you'll see is there's like massive, massive differences in revenues, uh, particularly in return on investments and D transfer tax. Um, it sounds like a broken record for you now, I'm sure you've heard it more than once. Um, so that that is continuing, um, the D transfer tax is still strong. Um, it will be our best year ever for deer, deer tax, yeah. We we transferred our deer to to the town and.
We could tax them, we'd probably make a lot of money on that.
Yeah, so so so, uh, we didn't get paid for the deer transfer tax, but for the D transfer tax, we definitely got paid. And, uh, uh, and so as a consequence, uh, we'll have our best year ever and we haven't had March yet. So, uh, so we're already surpassed that, so so, you know, go figure, COVID. Um, so there are some expenses that are higher than than we anticipated, the biggest of which was a grant to organization to the Congregé Maudial Vavet Cut. We didn't anticipate to pay them as quickly as we did, but the the amount was committed. We had committed an amount over a period of time. So this year, we paid one hundred and next year, we'll pay fifty. So that, uh, will be in your budget for next year. As well, uh, other things of, items of note would be environmental, uh, health services, we have seen some savings, most of which, I will say, have to do with the fact that we didn't do community, uh, litter cleanup last year. So we anticipated to do it twice and during the budget and then, and then COVID was in the middle of that and then we ended up not doing it at all. So we are in conversation about how we try to do that this year. Uh, we have some safety concerns. Uh, we have some safety concerns uh, that are less than COVID, and they're more like safety around, uh, you know, safety of 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 people uh, being in and out of ditches and doing things properly. Uh, we've had some, some safety incidents occur with some of our staff that have increased our le- level of understanding of what could be in these ditches. So, so we have to be mindful of the safety of our people. We know it's a very popular a very popular event. We get a lot of calls about whether or not we're going to do a community litter cleanup this year. So I believe there's a strong interest in that, which means that we're likely to include something in the budget for that next year. Uh, but but just to explain, that's the major difference between what we actually spent and what we did. Um, so the budget was a little wonky this year. The actuals will start to come back to normal. We're still working on budget for for actuals this year. Uh, the biggest change will be, uh, the biggest changes will be the D transfer tax revenue will come back to what I don't even know what to call normal, but it will come back to a a number that isn't the number we budgeted last year, which was like fifty thousand. And the other thing is is recreation. So we're going to try to to get some of those events restored. So, um, so that will have an impact because we're increasing our services. But we decreased our services and we decreased our revenues last year to, well, we decreased our services because we anticipated a reduction in revenue, but the reduction of revenue did not occur. So that's why you're seeing a a surplus at that level. Oh, uh, at the end of the year, you're going to see that number at that level or even more. So we're going to have to make some decisions about what that means. Uh, how much of that flows into the next year, for instance? How much of that gets invested in projects of your interest? And how much of it gets put aside for the future? And so that will be our budget discussions, which will happen in, you know, less than a month's time. So costs, what we've seen moving forward, the costs to do business are escalating. Uh, I think people are noticing that, uh, in their own homes, you know, if they're doing any sort of construction. Oh, uh, we are anticipating some increases in our C N P and other and other services that we cannot control. So we have to be mindful of these things as we move, as we move forward. And I will say that our service, uh, our our requests for delivering services to our residents is quite high. Our residents appreciate the services we're doing, and they're asking us to deliver a service. So we will be balancing all of these things in the coming months, and that is the report, Council.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our C I O? Counselor Dontral?
Not really a question, but just a a comment, and so I reflect back to last year, this time when we were starting our our budget deliberations with the uncertainty in the world. Uh, I I do dare say that the resilience of 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 our gall, of our people, of our staff, uh, you know, I think we fared up pretty good through all the uncharted waters that, you know, we really, there was a lot of uncertainty and, you know, to to put a budget together uh, in those times, it's tough, I know, on our C I O. But we we've gone through it and our our residents have, you know, been able to keep working. And we've kept the virus away for most parts. And, you know, I think this year as we're planning our new budget, even though we have some challenges, uh, at least I feel like we don't have the uncertainty that we had last year. So that's, you know, kind of my own opinion, but that's kind of how it is. Yeah, thanks.
Great comments. Anyone else? Counselor Diggan?
Uh, Madam Chair and the rest of council, at this time, I'd like to vacate my seat for a little while. I may be back, join in the meeting later on this evening, I'm not sure. Uh, but if I don't, I will definitely be looking it over on on Zoom, on YouTube and making sure that I keep up with what's been said for the rest of the meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So we have to make a motion to pass. Do we make a motion to pass this? I can never remember this one. Yes, okay.
To accept.
To accept. Okay. So are we ready for, to make a motion to accept financial statement? Is there somebody willing to make that motion? Uh, Counselor Bork, seconded by Counselor Dontral. Uh, any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary minded, raise your hand. Excellent. Motion carried. Thank you. Um. Next, we have correspondence and for information. So the first piece in that is a letter of response from the Department of Health and Wellness. So it's unfortunate that Counselor Diggan just left. Because this is about, um, a topic that is very dear to him, that he speaks on often, and it is about the E H S response times. So, um, it's a letter of response that we had written, and in the letter, it says that once we, basically, we were looking for response times for twenty twenty. And once though that information, the data is generated, they are going to provide that for us. So just so that we know. Um, in B, we received a letter from our Lieutenant Governor, the Honorable Arthur J. LeBlanc. And basically telling us that we are receiving a community spirit clap because of our, just as Counselor Dontral said. That demonstrates, because we demonstrated so much spirit and resilience during COVID, so that will be presented. We have the minutes and the newsletter from the library, Western County Regional Library. Um, six D, there is a letter from our minister our M L A, sorry, Colton LeBlanc, and this one was about, I'm not sure if you remember, but a few months back, I brought up uh, I had a resident concerned about the safety at the the mailboxes because of the lighting, the the lack of lighting. And basically, what we were told was that Canada Post determines where they put the lighting, and it's it's kind of up to them, and that's kind of where it sat, but M L A Colton LeBlanc still had more concerns, so he has drafted a letter to send to to ask basically, what do they consider a safety concern, and where does, where does the lighting go, and how did they determine that? So he's, he's investigating a little further into that. Number seven, we had no financial requests that I can see. Nope. So number eight, are there any agenda topics? Or notice of motion for counselors for the next meeting? Counselor Donaldson?
Uh, yeah, I probably would like to bring a motion to the next meeting to pre-approve the uh, the community grant portion of our budget, because I'm getting a few requests. I know we do it once in a while for recreation. I just wondered if we've ever done it uh, for a community grant, or do we wait till the full budget's passed?
We use, do we usually wait till the full budget is passed, or?
We, we, we do, but there's nothing stopping council from making that unilateral decision if it wishes.
Okay.
Before I bring it to as a motion, I'd like to get a sense, is is it, would, do the counselors want, want to do something like that, or would you, uh, just wait for the regular budget?
What do Counselors feel? Who would like to comment? Counselor Bork?
Um, me, it doesn't matter, but I'd prefer to wait till the budget comes, because I've told everybody that if they were waiting before we could get letters from them for the, for the grants, for our community grants, that it would be after the budget's gone through. So I mean, it doesn't really matter. It's whatever everybody else thinks.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Saret?
I'd, like Counselor Bork, I, you know, no offense, Sir Richard, uh, I I'd rather wait till the budget. That's that's my, my thing, you know, just, just my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just, I'll withdraw that. Just some of the school funding, by the time the budget's all done, uh, basically, school's going to be out, so I just had something from Drummond, that's all I wanted to hurry up to, that's all. But it's no big deal. They won't they'll have to wait.
Okay. C I O Muse, did you have something to say?
Uh, well, I do, uh, I I believe that those applications may have gone to recreation, Counselor Donaldson. Um, I have information, uh, that I can share with you that 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 might be helpful there. So yeah, I just, I'm I'm aware of those, uh, particular requests, and I believe they may have gone through another channel that I wasn't uh, that I hadn't advised that was potentially possible. So just, just so that you're aware. So we'll, we'll update you on that.
Okay. Does anybody else have a, a notice? Anything else? Okay. Um, anything in question, period, C I O Muse? No? Okay. Um, we are then going to go in camera, so we need a motion to go into camera.
Motion to go in camera.
Okay, did, I think, Jared, did you want to say something? No, okay, motion to go into camera, um, by Counselor Bork. Do we have a second?